Good evening, everyone. Our appointed time of five o'clock has arrived, so we will call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Oregon Village Board. It's Monday, January ninth, two thousand seventeen, at five P. M. I'm going to call a meeting to order and request roll call, please.
Bollig?
Here.
Staten?
Here.
Brethauer?
Here.
Grenier?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Budrow?
Thank you. Item three is a letter from Senior Center Director Allison Kelch, announced retirement effective July fifth, two thousand seventeen. And I would ask Allison for some comments, please.
Um, well...
You said you wanted to. Don't look at me like that.
They came up fast. Thank you for putting me on the beginning of the agenda, so I don't have to stay for this delightful meeting. Actually, the only one in this room that was here twenty years ago when I was hired was Jerry Bollig. And he was on the interview committee. Thank you for hiring me.
You're very welcome.
And I do remember, this is kind of a crazy story, but I remember the first board meeting I came to, I sat out in the front seat with, uh, front row with Vicki, the library director. And I said, "How come we're sitting out here and everyone else, all the other department heads are sitting here, up at the tables here?" And she said, "I don't know. It's always been that way." So then, like a big, my big mouth, I approached the president of the village board afterward, and I said, "Why, why are we not sitting up there? Is it because we're women?" Doh! That was it. The next meeting, we were sitting up here with our own little place cards. Yeah, I sometimes open my mouth when I shouldn't, but it was a good thing. So, yeah, I'm looking forward to the retirement date in about six months, so...
So, on behalf of the board, I would like to thank you, Allison, for your job at the Senior Center. Our Senior Center is well-respected throughout the county. It's where people come to see how to do things to best serve the seniors, and that's because of Allison's leadership. We appreciate that. I would also say that example Allison gave, I was not on the board at that time, just so that's in the public record, please. So we all know that.
Yeah.
But good for you.
The old days.
That was a good, that was a good thing to do. Appreciate that. But again, on behalf of the board and all the trustees and staff, of course, we appreciate and respect what you've done.
Thank you.
Enjoy retirement.
Thank you.
Steve, I'd like to make a comment. I am also on that committee for the Senior Center, and she's just done an excellent job, and we'll surely miss her very much.
Thanks.
Thanks, Darlene. Okay, that takes us to item four, public appearances. Item A has been tabled until January twenty-third. And item B, we're going to hold for just a minute with permission from the presenters to go to item C, because the Thieves have a deadline they need to meet and may not be able to be here long enough. So I'm going to read item C, and we'll do that. Item C, continuing discussion possible action regarding downtown dumpster license. Village Minister, note, Village Attorney Dragony, I request the board to provide direction on spending additional legal fees to amend the dumpster license agreement for Dan Donahue's email information. Matt estimates it would cost between four to five hundred dollars to revise the agreement, and any license fee of five hundred and twenty dollars is collected by the village for use of the dumpster corral.
And Matt and I just didn't feel comfortable having him proceed with revising it without the board directing us to do that.
Yeah.
Because of the, you know, and it may be actually closer to three hundred, but, you know, it's, it is going to cost some money, so...
Yeah.
Is it a question of where the funding would come from?
It would just come out of legal fees.
Yeah. Right.
Which did bump up for two thousand seventeen.
We did. That's correct.
Firstly, I'm fine with that.
Mike, you support that?
Well, we can't move forward without Matt revising the agreement, and I...
Would the downtown owner split that with us?
I don't understand.
Would the downtown owner split that, the legal fees, with us?
In addition to the dumpster fee?
Dumpster fee, yeah. Had to ask.
Yeah, I...
I know you can't answer for everybody right now.
I have to answer, and there's a lot of people.
Right, I know. I know. I think that question needs to be asked.
There's another question, probably should be asked.
Well, have to have your folks come to microphone if you need to.
My name is Jerry Thiel, and we own a few properties downtown that use the dumpster. And I guess my feeling is, is that, you know, what the fees are currently and what the legal fees are, it's pretty much a wash, and, you know, it's going to take fifty years to, you know, pay off any improvements on the dumpster corral, which was obviously overbilled in the first place. It could have been done for five thousand dollars versus seventeen thousand dollars. And that's quotes from several contractors. With that said, you know, there's other businesses that are using public property for their dumpsters without being charged. And I guess it's my feeling, and along with a lot of the other business owners and property owners, that, you know, it's kind of petty for the village to be, you know, charging a fee for certain businesses and not other businesses. And especially when each year it pretty much is a wash. Every year, we have to have legal fees to, you know, recertify the dumpster. So that's what I have to say about that, so...
Questions or thoughts?
Jerry, what legal fees do the merchants have every year?
Well, we don't have any legal fees per se, but the village does.
Right.
And it's, it's kind of a, you know, the tenants of the dumpster are paying five hundred and some dollars a year, and the contract is costing five hundred plus dollars a year to, you know, revise every year. So, you know, what's the purpose in it?
Just a question, if we would have changed it, we wouldn't have had, have any legal fees, right?
Yeah, the last couple of years, Jerry, we actually haven't, oh, we did change, we added Holsteins or, we just added the names, so the agreement really hasn't changed. We didn't spend five hundred dollars changing the agreement the last couple of years.
Let me ask you this, why, you know, are other businesses not being charged fees, and the South Main Street businesses are...
Which business? What are you talking about? I'm not sure.
It's the coffee shop here in town. And, you know, this was brought up several years ago, and we were told it was kind of petty for us to, you know, bring that up. And, you know, I don't want the coffee shop to be, you know, charged anything either, but, you know, what is the point in charging these fees? It's, is it paying for the dumpster corral?
Well, when the dumpster was originally built, and I guess we'll debate whether or not it was overbuilt or not, the staff wanted, because we use tax laws, we thought the people that are using it should help pay for the, pay it back. And Mark and I went through the exercise with the board, and the board decided not to pursue that, so that's what we came up with, the five hundred dollar arrangement. The coffee shop, that's a board decision. Basically, the coffee shop is used in the village's dumpster, which is over my shoulder here, that we use and the fire district uses, so... And we don't charge the fire district because we're sixty-some percent of the fire district, yeah.
Thoughts, comments? Darlene, you had a question.
Well, okay, how much are we charging for legal fees? I don't see it on here.
We're not charging.
We're not?
We're charging an annual fee of five hundred and twenty, I think it's five hundred...
Five hundred and twenty dollars. I see that.
For them to use the dumpster corral.
Okay.
Right.
If you look at your agenda, item four, C, it mentions right at the bottom, four to five hundred dollars possibly to revise the agreement.
Well, I saw that, but I thought we were charging legal fees too.
No, we haven't.
No, we haven't charged legal fees.
No, but the village, you know, the taxpayers are still paying, you know, the legal fees, and...
Okay.
Like I said, you know, it's going to take fifty-plus years to pay off the debt on seventeen thousand dollars, especially if the revisions are costing money in legal fees to, you know, redo the contract every so often.
When this, when this first came up, if I remember correctly, you know, the fee was seventeen thousand. There was discussion about having a downtown business owners, the yearly fee helped pay for that. We've opted not to do that. We, we did that out of the goodness of our heart.
So that's what's included in the five twenty, then?
Well, no, that's just a yearly break even.
Okay.
And we're never going to recoup that seventeen thousand dollars. That's done.
Okay, no.
You know, as far as contractors saying do it for five thousand dollars, I found that after a project is done, contractors always have a better price, so I'm not going to place a lot of stock on that. I just don't think that's appropriate to bring that up right now. It may seem like the purpose to make the village look bad, and I don't think that's productive going, that's in the past.
It's not my intent.
Let's go forward. Okay, that's what it felt like. Okay?
Also, another thing that enters into this subject is the fact that, very shortly, that corral has to move.
Yeah.
There's going to be a new project downtown, and...
But the good thing, Jerry, is we, we can reuse the fence.
Okay.
Jeff and everybody talked about how we can do it.
Right.
Because we already have a fence, which is going to help a lot.
Yeah.
What if we just get out of the dumpster business?
We miss the discussion every year.
It seems like all we get is complaints. So what if we get out of the dumpster business, and they figure it out themselves?
That's up to the board, obviously.
Maybe they have to purchase property, put a dumpster on. I just feel, I'm tired of getting beat up about this.
Yeah, I am too.
From these property owners. And I, I mean, I feel like we should be getting thanked for building these structures for them, and you come here and you make us feel bad. And I'm really kind of sick of it. So I'm, I'm about ready to say fend for yourselves.
Yep.
You've got a lot of property downtown. Maybe you could get into the dumpster business.
Well, we had all the dumpster, individual dumpsters, and they were crowding storefronts and everything else. They were fire hazards, and so, yeah. We're not trying to beat up anybody. It's just, you know, you provide, you know, space for other businesses. You provide snow plowing for other businesses, et cetera. Why is the Main Street properties, you know, an exception?
What other businesses do we provide snow plowing and dumpsters for?
Oh, I can give you a list.
I'd like to see the list.
Sure.
Do you have it right now?
I do not, no.
Why don't we put this on a future agenda while the trustees consider this, maybe the next agenda?
Does, we can go forward as is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Dan, Dan Donahue, Chocolate Caper, one oh five South Main Street, or two forty-eight for you, whichever you prefer. I guess I know, I know nothing about the history of this, because I only found out about this when I was asked to come to the meeting in December. I mean, from my perspective, I mean, it's as simple as the village is looking for five hundred dollars for rental of the space that the dumpsters is on, and, which is what we, I look at it as now, or recouping the cost of building it, or however you want to frame it. And we need an agreement that says, "We'll do that," and modifying that agreement, you know, would probably take about two hours of work, is my guess. And then, the only concern I have with paying that is then, I don't know if I need to have my lawyer review it. But I don't, I think this is way too much time for the issue that we're dealing with. I'm wondering if there's a way to say, literally, like, have someone write something that says, "For use of the land at the dumpster corral, these businesses will pay five hundred and twenty dollars a year. Forget all the other stuff in the agreement. I mean, if there's pests, we're not going to be okay with that anymore than the village is, because that's going to affect our businesses." Like the spraying clause in it, or, actually, I think the spraying clause is the only clause in the agreement that talks about anything other than severability, indemnification, and basic legal stuff. So, I mean, I don't know if there's just a way to get rid of the agreement and go, "There's a five hundred and twenty dollar license fee every year for the use of the dumpster corral. It's split up in the way I emailed Mike. I don't have the piece of paper with me, but I emailed Mike the way it would be split up among the businesses. We went on percentages..."
Yeah, we have that.
"...so, and just do that. I mean, I'm just trying to think of a way to get this done and avoid legal issues with it. And I mean, I would sign something that said, "The owners of the south, of these businesses, the owners listed below will pay five hundred and twenty dollars for use of the dumpster corral every year." And then, it lists the businesses, and we all sign, and that's the agreement. And we don't go, and then a renegotiation comes up. The only thing for negotiation is, is the fee, which I don't think anybody really wants to mess with that much, or, well, I hope doesn't.
Yeah. Couple of quick things. Lack of agreements makes lawyers nervous, and we've gotten burned by that in the past.
Sure.
And with that, I'd like to see Mr. Dragony looking forward to make some comments. So go ahead, Matt, and welcome.
Well, I don't have a lot to say. I wish it were that simple. I mean, I think what we've learned even by the email you sent with your suggested revisions to the document, that it's not that simple. So, I mean, I, I think I told Mike, you know, to kind of go through and rework the document to reflect where you guys all seem to be today with looking at your comments and so on. You know, yeah, it's going to take a couple hours, two or three hours of time.
Now, is that going to be a one-time fee, and then for future years, it'll just be a renewal, and they'll sign it, and it'll, it'll continue on into the future?
I have no idea, because it kind of depends on what happens in the future. I mean, I did an agreement a couple of years ago. I didn't particularly like it. I mean, there are things that I would like to do differently, but I don't make the decisions. And so, it's going to depend on kind of what the board wants to do, what you all want to do, what happens.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I think for our part, we came back, you know, and said, "Here's the payment split out like we were asked to do." And, and then, and we're perfectly willing to pay that, and...
Who's, here's just a question, an example. Is there one person who's going to be responsible for collecting that money and delivering it to the village? Or does the village have to collect?
There's one part, the Thieves will be responsible for administering the administrative aspects of the agreement.
No, that's for the dumpster, it isn't for the agreement. In the past, every individual business has...
Has kind of checked to the village?
Yeah, has remitted their money.
See what I'm saying?
Yes.
Yeah.
Because we actually thought that'd be the easy way of doing it. One person, that way we don't, we weren't worried about who's, all these percentages you'd enter. We would say, "We don't really care."
We don't care where the money comes from.
Give us the five twenty.
Bring us five twenty, y'all can use it, and you figure out the rest. I mean, if I could write something like that, I would, but it's not really worked out that way. I mean, so, I mean, I'm happy to work on it if the board wants to have me kind of rework the agreement to reflect kind of where you guys are and your suggestions.
Right, I'm just trying to avoid what Jeanie's talking about with being people, just having to deal with this periodically and trying to eliminate that, so it doesn't come up again.
The other thing, the other thing, I just want, one other point, which you have to recognize is that, I mean, the village is the, is a property owner here. And there are very few property owners that would agree to do what we're, what we're doing. I mean, I really can't think of any. I wouldn't. It was my property.
Sure.
So, you know, we're trying to be accommodating, and, and I'm sure we'll keep trying to be accommodating and try and find a way to solve it.
Should we just change the signatories and the amount of the fee and not change the agreement?
Well, there are at least a couple of changes that I thought we had to make in light of the fact that we need to move this thing this year. I wanted to make a, I can't, did I, I think I might have made a change to reflect that. And then when Mike and I looked at it, I think we, we recognized maybe one other thing that we had to. We had to make some adjustments, we thought, to make it workable, so...
But actually, what Dan is suggesting would be a pretty simple thing, is he would use, he would use this paragraph for the payment. He's given us all the, all the names.
Yeah, I mean...
And then...
And then forget about, you know...
Just leave everything else the way it is.
If you'll let me kind of just not have to deal with all of your bullet points.
And we, I thought his idea was a good idea about the renewal. Just, in a way, it's already, I don't think we've done that before.
Yeah. And to be honest with you, I haven't really carefully reviewed your, your email. I saw it, and I said, "Mike, what do you want me to do?"
And, and if you want to ignore most of those comments, that's...
Okay.
You know, prior to the parking lot being redone after thirty-some years, the garbage containers were plopped down in the middle of the parking lot there, and there was never a charge. And, and that was for thirty-some years. So I'm not sure what evolved, that, you know, the South Main Street properties are now paying, you know, fees. They're already paying, you know, dumpster fees. And it was a issue at that time where, you know, we had all these individual carts lined up outside the back buildings, and that was presented as a eyesore, and as well as not a good idea as far as the fire department was concerned. So, you know, we got on board with, you know, the dumpster corral, and which I think, you know, the taxpayers along South Main Street and the businesses bring the vitality to downtown. And, you know, I think it's a matter of, you know, the municipality or the village working with the business owners, and that's what, you know, it's a partnership, and, you know, sometimes, you know, you got to look the other way, and so, yeah.
But Jerry, don't you think as far as a partnership goes, that when the village paid for the entire cost of building the corral, that the partnership kind of waned a little bit? In a partnership, you would expect to be a fifty-fifty cost of construction, wouldn't you?
Well, I guess, you know, we could have done that, but, you know, I guess we didn't have any say in the, you know, estimates either as far as the cost of the corral was concerned. And again, despite what Steve said, you know, I think, you know, that could, that corral could have came in under five thousand dollars. And we had several contractors look at it, and said, "Yeah, we can pour a slab and put up a fence," and so, you know, and then it ended up costing seventeen thousand, and, you know, yeah.
So is the only issue right now the fact that the South Main businesses are paying rent to, to the village for the corral? If there was no rent to be paid, would there be an issue at all for the village to have to hear?
No.
So this entire issue boils down to five hundred and twenty dollars a year?
Well, it's...
No, the issue is, is legal fees to revise the agreement.
Well, what I'm saying though is, if there was no agreement, and if the village abdicated...
Well, the other issue is, do we, do we allow them to use our, our property for the dumpsters? So we need to, we need to make a judgment about, about that as well.
So when I, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, if we didn't have a dumpster space in there, how many more parking spots could we get?
Two.
So when I was in Charleston, South Carolina recently, it was an amazing trip, and I'd encourage anybody to go. But one of the things that sticks out in my mind is walking down the street and seeing a garbage can literally on the sidewalk in front of every single restaurant and every single store. And it took away from the charm of that trip. It still sticks out in my mind. It smelled. They were the little push, push-and-pull carts. So when I thought back to my experience there, what I said to my wife is, "I wonder why Charleston doesn't just put a centralized dump area where all of the restaurateurs and stores could go and take their garbage. One truck or two trucks could come in at a time and just unload the whole thing off the site of the tourists, and, and what a better experience that would have been for me." So if I was going to close my eyes and try to wish something for Oregon, I would have wished that we would have built the dumpster corral from the perspective of keeping the garbage in a central place. But I would have also probably just wished that we would have accepted that as a cost to make Oregon a viable place to live and, and to shop and frequent. And I think somewhere along the line in my mind where we got lost is, we're spending a lot of time talking about five hundred and twenty dollars. A lot of time, a lot of attorney's fees. We're almost talking about throwing good money after bad. We'll take our entire rent from this year and apply it towards a revision on a contract that's not working. Not to mention how long we're spending in session, and how that accumulative effect of that is to, you know, all of our potential salaries or whatnot if we weren't here. It just, to me, it just doesn't seem like a battle worth fighting. And if it's on principle, to me, I would just say lesson learned. I think we did the right thing as a village in the end. I think we have the right product in the end, but it's just not worth fighting a handful of business owners over five hundred and twenty bucks a year, in my mind.
We're willing to pay the five hundred, but it doesn't make sense, you know, economically for the village and the taxpayers to be spending X number of dollars every year to revise the contract. And that's, I guess that's my point.
But we haven't, Jerry.
Yeah, we haven't done that. This is the first time that's come up.
Yeah.
You know, we're hoping we can revise it now and be done until things change.
But the reason it came up this time was because there was tenants that weren't on the original contract. Well, now, what happens if Chocolate Caper closes and Mr. X's studio comes in? We got to go back and revise the contract again, and that's another hour at two hundred bucks or whatever? I mean, this is a never-ending, this is a never-ending problem.
So when's that dumpster corral going to move with the development of Jefferson Street Plaza?
Depends on, depends on how that, how that proceeds.
What's your best guess?
It would likely, they're wanting to construct this next summer into, I think they were hoping to be open by April eighteenth, is that right?
Yeah, April twenty-eighteenth.
I think it was April of eighteen, so it obviously would have to be done well before that, because that's an area of construction over there, and then they'll have, you know, we'll have to move that as part of the new parking lot.
Yeah.
So why don't we, why don't we let them pay the fees, not worry about an agreement, let them pay the fees. It's going to change anyhow when everything changes, and if it doesn't work, we'll lock it up. Be done with it. Not spend a cent on legal fees.
I just don't, I don't agree with lock it up. I mean, I don't see the liability there. For, it's not like people are...
Only, only if the downtown business people can't follow through and pay us and get that done and make it work, and no more coming back, and no more hassles. It's just done. It's off our agenda, and just let it ride until things change with the new development.
Right.
And it'll be over with.
That's what I agree with, too.
I would agree with everything you said, except that I would just say, "Forget about the five twenty." Because once somebody pays, to me, once somebody pays, there's an, there's an inferred contract.
Well, but, but what I understood, what I, what I heard was, we leave the structure where it is. We have no agreement with anyone with respect to who gets to use that structure. And I guess whoever wants to use that can use it. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, downtown business owners make it work.
Yeah.
And then, and so...
They don't, it goes away.
And if they want to padlock the dumpsters, because this is my dumpster, and I'm paying for the pickup of this particular dumpster, well, then padlock the dumpster, but the gates wouldn't get padlocked.
Oh, so they can gate, they can padlock the actual dumpster, but not the gates?
If they're concerned within themselves about who's using what dumpster, and put a padlock on your dumpster...
We're not concerned about that.
And I'd say leave the gates unlocked and let the village use that area for garbage disposal.
Okay, so, you know, it's a little, it's a little unusual in the sense that we, as a property owner, are saying, with no agreement whatsoever, we're going to allow other parties to use our property to manage their waste. I'm not sure what negative complicate, you know, assuming it's true that you can, you can at any time you want, if you don't... I'm not sure what negative complicat-, you know, assuming it's true that you can, you can at any time you want, if you don't like how it's going, go over there and say, get out and we're locking it up, we're taking it down. Then maybe the worst thing that can happen is, that's what you have to do. I guess the one thing I'd wanna just verify is that, you know, based on what's said here today, you could do that. You know, I don't know. They might, what, what kind of contract do you have for your, with your waste hauling system? Is it monthly, annual? What is it?
It's monthly.
It's monthly.
It's a monthly?
It's monthly right now. We were just exploring a two-year contract.
And, you know, so who knows how it's gonna go? Again, this isn't necessarily how I would go about doing it, but if this is what you all wanna do, I don't have to do anything.
I didn't think you'd like that, but I'm tired of this.
There's no work for me, so that's.
Why do we worry about it? Let's let them worry about it.
Residents use it, that wanna use it downtown?
Yes, I don't think that'll be a problem.
Well, the only thing is, I mean, I guess in the last year, the only issue I think we've encountered was there was some, there were people who were not part of this contract that were apparently using the dumpster corral and putting stuff under there. We were asked to put a sign up that said, no unauthorized dumping allowed. And we did that. I don't know if that's helped or not. But that's been the only thing, I mean, and I, I agree, you know, if you don't, if it's really not under any agreement, then that's essentially saying, I mean, we have no teeth to go back and say, you can't dump here. You know, we have, we have talked to the developers just most recently. There were some people, I think, moving out of over there. And there was some junk in the yards and that type of stuff. We talked to the developers and they immediately had that taken care of. But, you know, that's an area over there that could be used quite a bit in the next few months.
So my idea is a bad idea. That's what I'm hearing down the table.
It just opens it up to everyone.
Yeah, I got you, okay.
But, but truthfully, nobody's gonna, nobody's been abusing the dumpster corral behind the fire station, right? You don't have problems with people bringing their personal garbage back there and filling up those dumpsters? Or going over to the dumpsters.
Not a very visible location, but I, yeah.
But we don't have a problem.
Not that I'm aware of.
And we don't have a problem with people going over to the public works area where there's a bunch of dumpsters and.
Yes, we do.
Throwing stuff in there without permission.
Yes, we do.
So then we have a problem in some of our dumpster areas. We don't have a problem in others of our dumpster areas. And that's just part of managing business in the village.
It's a frustrating part. We do get a lot of people that actually try to dump a lot of things in, in certain dumpsters that are not supposed to be used by public.
It, it's gotten better since the cart system was introduced years ago. When we had the tag, that was, it was a lot of what's called fly dumping going on in the village. But that's improved dramatically.
Matt?
I hereby volunteer to draft the agreement at a cost of not to exceed my own time of five hundred dollars. If I can get it done for five hundred dollars, do it pro bono.
If you can get it done for five hundred dollars, you'll do it pro bono.
If I can get it, I'll get, I'll work on it until I get to five hundred bucks. And if I'm done, I'll come back and I'll show you what I have. And if I'm done and if it's beautiful, I have five hundred dollars, we can move forward. But if I, but if I do a draft of an agreement and I've spent my five hundred dollars and we send it over to these guys and then they send it back and they still don't like it, I'm done.
But if you've done it for five hundred dollars, we're gonna make twenty bucks on that dumpster this year.
Wouldn't that be great? You make twenty bucks.
You've already spent twenty bucks.
I'm just saying, you know, this is, I know, I, I, I think the village wants to help these guys. I'm not, and I'd like, I'm as tired as anyone at talking about this. And I, you know, I don't see a better solution. I, I, I'm happy to contribute my time up to three and a half or whatever hours it is to get to five hundred bucks. I will take a crack at it. I'll do my best shot. But I, but again, but then I don't want it to be nitpicked by everybody.
But it's gonna be.
Well, then, then I'll be done.
Speaking for myself, I mean, I think, to me, this is a simple agreement. You can use it. You'll use it in the authorized way. You'll pay this fee.
So Dan, you don't want any of the pages of bullet points you submitted into the agreement?
I'd, I'd prefer just a simple agreement that said, you use the space, you pay this fee. That's the agreement. You know, the other stuff I think just creates issues to nitpick and guy, spraying two times a year. Okay, then our provider changes and they only spray once a week. So now we need to, now we're in violation of the agreement or we have to amend the agreement.
It's our, it's our parking lot. It's a public parking lot. I think we're probably gonna have to spray.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm having, spraying may be the bad one to put in there. But I don't think there's that many clauses that need to be in this agreement. There's not that many issues to address.
And don't you think it's all gonna change too when you have to move it?
Well, my understanding was that it would be relocated and it would be treated the same way after.
Relocation is really not gonna affect it. I don't see any issue with that at all.
No, I mean, I'll have to walk somewhere else.
All the conditions will be the same if the agreement, the board decides to continue with the agreement.
Is there a liability concern in that or none?
You know, I, not unless they're, you know, leaving stuff out, outside the enclosure in a way that could create a hazard. And I'm not aware that that's really the case.
We track down on that.
Yeah, so I, it's not so much that that I'm concerned about. It's just, this is village property. We're allowing third parties to use it for managing their waste. And there are a number of issues that have to be addressed in terms of, okay, exactly how is that gonna work? And so I, I just don't think it's a good idea for a property owner to just allow that to happen without managing it to some extent. Who's allowed to do it? What are the rules with respect to how they're doing it? I, I think, and I agree, there aren't that many issues to deal with. That's why it's not a ten thousand dollar agreement. It's just a few hundred dollar agreement, you know? It's not a.
I don't know, I join everybody else, at least the other board members that have been here through this process. I'll call it a process. I, I'm real weary of talking about garbage, downtown garbage. It seems to me, and I know it should be simple, but obviously, history has shown that this is anything but simple. I would like to see the downtown business owners handle it themselves. Maybe the village designates a spot. Here, this is the spot. You know, we gotta move the fence anyway. So maybe we donate that fence and say, here you go. Police it yourselves. And if there's any misuse, any problems, we'll just do away with it. I guess that would be my thoughts on that issue right now.
Yeah, like Matt said, the, the issue that's, that's there, it's village property.
Right.
If it wasn't village property, it wouldn't be an issue. Say, fine, there, just go do it. It is on village property.
But it was village property prior to the parking lot being redone too. Both dumpsters were, like I said, plopped down right in the middle of the parking lot. And there was no issues.
And there are other examples of public structures that the village puts up because it benefits the village as a public. And there aren't any agreements and there aren't any fees. For example, the restrooms by the softball diamonds. And we're proposing to put up a couple more over on Alpine Parkway. So we'll continue to invest in structures without agreements.
But that's, but that's public for public. This is public for private.
Yeah, I see, I see what you're saying. I, I think that that's kinda where we get stuck is when, is in that, is in that definition. Because I do know that this is a thread that if we pull on it, we'll find that there are other examples of businesses that are using public space without an agreement. And I, I know that Jerry, I don't know what list Jerry's got, but I know of a couple names that should be on it. So we could open up this conversation. We could go down that road. But we don't really have to. We could just agree that this is in the public's best interest to have this corral. And, and that it was a good thing for the village to build and ultimately for the businesses in that area to maintain. If everything goes right with this apartment complex, there will be one other tenant in that area. And it'll be the apartment complex and they'll obviously have to provide garbage services for their sixty-one tenants.
Yeah, they are.
So the chances of this being abused, I think, are pretty slim. And like, like Jerry was saying, and I think even Steve, I mean, if it gets abused, then we have to deal with it. You know, if the park shelters got abused, we'd have to deal with that too. And maybe in this case, the way that we would deal with it is just say, it's a nuisance and we're gonna remove it from our property. And we're not gonna have it, we're not gonna have it there anymore. I don't know. But it could be that easy. And in any event, it prevents us from having to continue to maintain this contract, which, again, just every time there's a change to the tenants becomes an expense to the village. I feel like I'm reflecting what everybody's saying, but I don't know where we go from here.
Yeah, that's the catch.
I don't, I don't feel right about voting to pay money to update the lease. I just feel like that's good money after bad, especially given the timing. So if we're gonna call a motion on updating the lease, my, my vote would be to not do it.
And I would interpret that, if it's approved, to mean that they're no longer allowed to use the village's parking lot for their garbage structure. Because they have no agreement that allows them to do that post December thirty-one, two thousand sixteen.
In which case, we'd get cans from the village and do it that way?
I don't know. I don't think so because it's commercial property. I don't know that you have a right to do.
It depends if we look at the contract.
Okay, so I'm not certain how to answer that. But so if your motion is adopted and that's the only thing the board does, which is to say we're not renewing or entering into a new agreement, then they have no contractual right to use the village's parking lot for their dumpsters.
So should we put a motion forward just to move in the direction of forward? Or, or do we need to debate more?
What's, what's forward?
Well, forward meaning getting off the schneid, like moving this conversation forward. Like, I'd be happy to put forward a motion to not renew the lease as it's currently written and see where that motion lands with regard to the board. I'd be happy to put forward a second motion to allow the dumpster corral to be used by the village businesses. And I know you're gonna tell me I need to define the businesses and all of that. But to be a village structure, to be used by the village residents, any village taxpayers, I suppose, I would probably need a little bit of help smithing that motion. But the gist of it would be to allow that space to be used without a lease.
I can't believe I'm saying this.
Well, I'm looking to Matt for some direction here because I'm, because I feel like we've discussed it.
Matt's not gonna like it.
I think your second motion, if, if where you're headed with that is a motion adopted by the board that allows business owners to use that, you know, parking or that corral in some way.
To store their dumpsters.
Without a written agreement and without kind of addressing the issues we've addressed historically, contractually. I personally would be a little concerned about, about how that would play out. I, I think they might be too. I mean, somebody else could show up and say, get your damn thing out of there. I'm putting my thing in there, you know, you're, you know? Right now, they know, they have a right to use that space and to contract with Palatieri or whoever you're contracting with to come in there and put their dumpsters in there. And they know it's okay. And they know nobody else is gonna interfere with that. They know who's gonna use it, and so do we. So if you're gonna create a lot more ambiguity regarding who gets to use that space and how and when and under what circumstances, I don't think that's necessarily gonna, it might work out just fine. It might be that there aren't any problems. It might not. I, I'm not sure.
But it gets us out of the policing business. It, it says, look, we built a structure for the village.
You will never get out of the policing business as long as that's your parking lot. And these are your main street businesses who, if there's a problem over there, it's gonna be in here. We'll be talking about it.
Well, we've talked, we've talked before about public-private problems and we can go on down that list as well. I mean, the reality is, is that this isn't the forum for neighbors to hash out problems that neighbors have, right? This is the forum for neighbors to talk to the village about the intersection of residence and village.
I think what Matt's getting at is that if you, and the board can do, I think Matt's saying a couple things. The board can do what you want. You guys are the decision makers, obviously, on this. But if you open it up and, and they have, they, they get users there that are not paying to use their dumpster, they're gonna be back here saying the village needs to deal with that.
Yeah, if you wanna let them, if you wanna let them, if you want them to continue to make that service available and trustee Boudreaux, I mean, I'm totally sympathetic to your perspective on, you know, hey, there's a, this would be better than having garbage all over the place. I get that. I don't disagree with it at all. I think if you wanna let them do it, we, we should try and have an agreement. I've, again, I'm offering to spend a few hours of my own time at no cost to the village to try and get you there, if that's what you wanna do. I would rather have an agreement than not. If you, so I, I think we have to decide is, I mean, do you wanna continue this relationship knowing there's some time and effort involved in taking care of it and watering it every year and maybe changing the names now and then? I mean, that's just gonna happen. Do you wanna do it that way? Or do you wanna do it in a kind of totally, kind of much less regulated way? In which case, I'm just not sure how that works out. I personally would recommend against it as your attorney, but it's your call.
Matt, if we drafted the agreement, would it be able to say, you know, this agreement is between the village and the parties listed below? So that if there was a name change, new tenant, someone swapped out, we could just add their name in and not worry about revising the agreement?
And we've, we've done that.
You mean, I would try and set it up so that it would be kinda user friendly like that? Yeah, I mean, but remember, you've got parties in different categories and they pay different amounts based on which category they are. So if a party changes and they go from one category to another, it's gonna change the dollars. And a lot of things fit to, you know, it's all kinda interconnected, right?
Yeah.
It's a house of cards. You pull one card out and the whole thing falls down. Kind of, that's kinda what happens with these agreements. So unless everybody pays exactly the same thing, then which case, yeah, then it's very easy to interchange them.
So who does the agreement benefit?
Who does this agreement benefit? I think it's mutually beneficial to have an agreement. From our perspect-, it gives both parties clarity with respect to what their rights and obligations are. Gives everyone clarity. And we all know what the rules are. We all know who has a right to do what.
How, how does this agreement benefit the village?
Well, it benefits the village if you agree that it is a public good to allow these main street business owners to have the, the use of that space for the dumpsters to manage garbage the way that we're talking about. If you agree that's a public good, it's beneficial to the village to allow that to happen and to manage it through an agreement. In my mind, it's better to allow that to happen and manage it through an agreement than to just allow it to happen without any kind of structure that manages how that's happening. So that's the benefit to the village is, if you believe that it's a public good to allow that to happen, then it facilitates allowing that happen.
So how does creating a restroom structure without any sort of an agreement whatsoever protect the village?
We have the right to regulate that through our rules with respect to parks. It's public, it's a public, it's like any other public park. We decide when it opens, when it closes, what kinds of activities are allowed there. We can set up whatever regulatory framework we want. I suppose we could approach this similarly and say, you know, we have this garbage corral structure in this parking lot. And here is our policy with respect to who gets to use it and when and how and all that. But I just don't think that framework really applies very well to that situation. It's a different kind of situation.
We'd have our dumpsters in there, you know, that we pay to empty. And so if someone comes along and dumps a couch into one of them and is doing this every week, we can't, you know, can we call the police and tell, say?
It's different. It's not, we're not, we're not creating this structure for public use per se. We are, we, we view it as a public, I mean, the question is, is it a public good to allow this to happen? And I've heard, you know, you have to decide that. That's your decision, not mine. If you decide it's a public good, it's, we're still doing something that is really a private use. We're allowing a private use of this structure for managing the, 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 the waste management needs of these businesses. So it's possible that it, that can be a private use, but you could still find that there's a public good being served by doing it. But that's your call.
I have a question. Okay, if you could redo it and up to five hundred dollars, would they still have to pay their amount?
It's up to you guys. Tell me, you want, you want them to pay anything or not?
Okay, I, I would make a, a motion to have you redo it up to five hundred dollars.
Of, of my time, right? And do you want them to be, to have to pay the five hundred and twenty bucks or whatever it was or not? Is that part of your motion?
The annual fee.
The annual fee?
The annual fees, but I would say, yes, I, I would think the annual fees. But your charge, who will pay for your charge then?
I will pay for my time up to, yeah, I will pay for my time.
I, I would add that to my motion.
So you, you, the motion is to ask the village, to have the village attorney redo the agreement pro bono? And, but, and the five hundred and twenty dollar fee is still in there for the owners? Okay. And just so you all know, I will read, Dan, I'll read your email and your comments, anything that looked like they're good ideas. I'll try and incorporate them. I'll do the best I can to get this thing.
I'm not a lawyer, I was just trying to clean it up.
And I'll try and do it so that next year, all we have to do is change out names. I'll do the best I can. I don't, but, and bring it back and hopefully we can. So that's the motion, right?
Yes, that's the motion.
When you say pro bono, my understanding of that is no cost to the village.
I will not, I, I will send you a bill that says the fee for this service is zero.
He's that tired of this.
Even if I may, you know, we're not opposed to paying five hundred dollars.
There's no second on that.
Yeah, we need, we need a second before we go.
I'll second that.
I just think we've talked enough about it. And I think that this is the, the good way to go about it.
For the discussion?
So I'm just gonna make a comment that I'm gonna vote in favor of this because we're not paying you five hundred dollars to do it.
I view it as my contribution. Give, I, somebody, I gotta give back, right? You know, I'm giving back.
Yeah, and you're as sick of it as we are.
Well, I mean, I, I feel like it's a difficult, for some reason, it's been harder than I feel like it should be. I don't know if it's my fault or who, I mean, some.
No, that's not.
It's just, it's just, I'd like to, I'd like us all to get past.
We appreciate your graciousness.
We'd all like to get past this, Matt.
I'm just gonna state that I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no because I think it's ridiculous that our attorney is working for free because we have downtown owners that are bitching about paying five hundred and twenty dollars. I think that's ridiculous.
We're not complaining about.
Then what are you complaining about?
Nothing. We were asked to come back, because we were asked to come back with the payment structure that we should present, which we did. And the village would present us with an agreement to sign. That is what. That is what the verbatim, what we were told at the meeting in December.
Then why can't you pay the $520 for it?
We are. We are.
We have no problem paying $500.
Pay the legal fees. Why is our attorney having to do it for free?
It's your agreement.
It's our land.
If we wanna go through a whole, if we wanna go through the whole legal process on this, Matt would draft his agreement. We would have our attorneys review it, so we would incur our legal fees on our side. Each side would be responsible for their own legal fees. We'd come to an agreement that we agreed to, and we would sign it. We're trying to avoid all that back and forth and all that not being nitpicky on our side and not requesting too much.
I'm voting no. That's just, I wanted to state that.
So how about you have your lawyers draw up the agreement and bring it to us?
I, I offered.
We did the, we did the legal fees the last time. Matt doesn't have to spend time at no charge doing it. You, you guys do the legal fees with your lawyers.
I did offer to do the agreement myself. I offered to redraft it with the current terms myself, and I am perfectly willing to do that. I'm not a lawyer, so it's gonna be.
Then the problem is, it has come back to me, and I still have to do the work. It's less, it's, it's easier, faster, more efficient if I just do it. And we're done. Cuz otherwise, I gotta review what somebody else does, and frankly, that tends to be harder.
Yeah, I understand.
And by Matt, he means an intern.
That's really sort of insulting. No, it's, he's our village attorney. He's a professional. He's not having interns do our work for us.
Matt, were you insulted by my comment?
I didn't even understand it. I wasn't sure what you meant by that.
Okay, well, if you were insulted, I apologize. It was meant to be equipped.
I was not insulted.
All right.
Further discussion or comments? So we have the motion as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
I just wanna state for the record that we just spent another 50 minutes on this.
And what was the final vote? Was it four to two?
Four to.
So Steve and G. Thank you, Matt.
Okay, so we're done with that item. So, item D involves Bonnie and Jerry also. Do you want us to move this to the next agenda? You have to go, right? So item D is off the agenda for tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we'll go to item 4B under public appearance, discussion of Matt Gerlach regarding the December 5th letter on safe condition of Lincoln Road and possible board action. So I know there's, I know who all is here to represent that. You're Matt, I presume?
I am Matt.
Welcome. I met your compatriots there before, but you worked too long to get here in time, so. Welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And my apologies for that taking so long. We did this for six months once before, so have sympathy on us. Go ahead. I'll be quiet.
So, Jeff, did you wanna reiterate some of this, or would you like me to start?
Why don't, why don't you start, and then I'll come in, and then we'll get that, I'll get the discussion rolling, I think.
Okay. All right, so first off, thank you all for being here, and thank you all for what you do, being in this and listening. It's a thankless job, but thank you for what you're doing. I resided 665 in Fort Julian, Oregon. I've been there for a little over three years. I'm here with my wife and several other residents in the Bergamont general geographic area. And what we had talked about as a concern was the Lincoln Road condition, as well as potentially speed limits and access from a pedestrian and bike, as well as car usage. So you have all been provided with a summarization from Jeff, and I think he'll elaborate on that further, so I don't wanna go into all the details there. But I did wanna bring up a couple extra points that I think are important as it relates to this. First off, I think the biggest thing that's on our mind is the aspect of safety on Lincoln Road as it goes into all of those elements, whether you're driving a vehicle, using it from a pedestrian perspective or any other type like bicycles. And it's evident that the road's condition isn't the best in the city, but as Jeff had mentioned in the details, the, the agreement between the IGA of the village and the town has been kept at a Pacer 6 rating or adequate for the agreement on the takeover of that road because of the Bergamont development and the agreement of such. We, another individual that resides, Trevor Passmore, will come up and give a bit more detail. I think it will be helpful for all of you to see how the road's speed limits change as it relates also to elevation changes from Lincoln as far west to some of the town's boundaries all the way to Union Road. One of the other points I wanted to add to what Jeff has to say is I think the development that's going on at Bergamont is a pretty significant development as it grows the tax base from a residential perspective in Oregon. And I think personally that we have a great consumer group that is enjoying what you guys are embracing in the development of the downtown area. And part of what we can do is be better consumers of the downtown area and getting there in a safe and effective manner. And I think Lincoln Road is a part of that as we continue to see the growth out there at its rough estimate right now of just over 50% developed. In whole, I think the city benefits from the group of consumers that exists out there, both from a tax base as future homes continue to be developed, but also the economic growth within all of the businesses in the Oregon area and being able to access that effectively. What we are hoping for is that you take serious consideration for the elements of safety, the elements of being able to use the, the parts of Oregon that you've done a great job growing. And whatever vision you have that will help us improve that road, whether it means curb and gutter and sidewalk as far west as the western development of Bergamont or beyond, if it means something close to what exists on the western part of Netherwood as that comes into Main Street. Or if it means a separate sidewalk and, or pathway much like exists in the Lerner Conservation Park for pedestrian use or bicycle use, whatever you guys can embrace, we just wanted to make sure we voiced our concerns as it relates around these topics, so. Trevor, would you like to join in on some of your information?
And thanks, Matt, for starting this off.
Could you hand him the microphone so he can?
Well, I'll come to that in a second. Just backing up what Matt said, when we had the meeting at Bergamont, the annual meeting that we have every year to discuss things, I was present, and Matt actually raised this issue, and there were four or five other residents chipped in about. And we got quite a discussion going, and it was close to my heart, because I think I saw you guys about two and a half years ago on this subject, on speeds particularly and the condition. So the conversation went on, and several of the folks there, three, I think it was in total, said that they had concerns about driving that road, particularly going west, but also coming east towards Union. It's quite narrow, and with the shoulder broken up as it is, cars tend to drive out a bit further. And if they do come across a bite ruddy, which is my thing, but I understand it's not everybody's, but it, it can be quite dangerous, particularly on the crests of hills. If a vehicle's coming out to pass a cyclist, or even just to come out to avoid the broken shoulder, there's a risk on the brow of a hill, particularly if people are going fast, of danger of collision. And a couple of, two or three of the residents said that they had had experiences where on the crests of hills, they've had concern. So discussion went on like that. So I, when Matt raised this issue and the conversation developed, Matt decided he was gonna write, and I supported that, as did many other residents. Given the poor state of the road, and I understand there are budget limitations, and it's costly to repair a complete stretch of road, obviously. And Matt's highlighted what might be possible in the future to broaden it or repair the shoulders or whatever, to make it a bit safer. But I think another opportunity that could be available to us, or to you guys, is to look at the speeds. And I just did this very, very sophisticated chart. Excuse it. This is just a terrain map along Lincoln Road from Union up to Storytown. These are the speed limits and the distances for each section. So obviously, close to town, it's 25, as it should be. Then it goes to 45 up to the Glenway junction. And then it changes to 55 from there for about a mile and a bit until it comes to another 45 near Tipperary up to Storytown. So there's one, two, three, four speed limit changes. This is the part where there's a crest of a hill, which is pretty dangerous. This one also, where it just after you're coming this way, it goes to 45 miles an hour. 55 miles an hour for this one and a bit mile stretch seems strange when there's this sort of terrain. All these roads are 45, and they're similarly hilly and same sort of width. So why this 1.2, 1.5 mile stretch here, should be 55, seems a bit strange to me, and others. So that's really what I wanted to add to Matt's general points about the condition. This would make it a bit safer, because cars do exceed 55. I mean, they do 60, 65 sometimes. Personally, I had an experience two and a half years ago where I was cresting this hill, and a black SUV was coming, and it was a truck the other way, and he had nowhere to go, and I had nowhere to go. I was the soft option. I got pushed into verge, but that's just me. I'm just concerned that for cars and buses and trucks, large vehicles use this road, and the speed is excessive, and I think if this were changed to 45, it would make people think, hey, this is a, a rural road that has dangers. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, and if I remember correctly, last time you were here, we worked to get the speed limit changed, and it came back from the state, the county?
County.
From the state.
The state, the state actually looked.
Was the state?
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure.
And they, they said they felt the speed limits were reasonable.
Well, actually.
Which we did not agree with.
The city engineer, I think his name, I think it's changed, was then Ryan Meyer, I believe, and he put it in writing, and he said he had no objection to lowering that section to 45 miles an hour.
City engineer for whom?
For Madison, I believe, or for the, he was the person responsible for this area. Ryan Meyer, it was, I think it was a new gentleman there.
I have, I didn't come across any of that.
I have a question. I just don't remem, I don't, I wasn't involved in this. This is a town road. Do we know who has jurisdiction to set the speed limit? I don't know. It's a county issue?
Has to go through a road study, a speed study, to change the speed limit.
So the, this fellow you're referring to may have been with the county.
I think, I'm not sure his title.
He is Pam Dopp. I don't know who he's talking about either. Pam Dopp is the county.
Probably, we could look at it again, but I'll quit you.
Apologies, I don't know. But there was certainly a gentleman who was quoted in correspondence and wrote, I think it was to you guys, and said that he'd have no objection.
Yeah, I, I don't recall ever seeing that or seeing that name.
I'll see if I can pull it up.
Yeah, that'd be great. If you can recover that, that would be great. Anybody else recall that, that was on the board then? And I'm not saying it wasn't there, I'm just saying I don't recall seeing it. I'd love to see it, cuz.
I'll, I'll see if I can, I, I.
I mean, I think we would agree, we'd like to see those speed limits changed. I'd like to see the whole thing be 35 myself.
And, and maybe that's what it is. Maybe that, maybe, maybe the request of taking everything to 35 is what they.
What we tried to do.
Do. And so maybe, you may be correct, and maybe something came back just for that small section there, it's possible, yeah.
It was just for that section, I believe. He's, he's had no objection to lowering it to 45, yeah.
And as I recall, looking at the agreement, Jeff, the intergovernmental agreement, that deals with maintenance, but I don't think that deals with jurisdiction of over speed limits. So that would be a town-county issue, probably? At least with respect to town segments?
I know there's, it takes a lot to change the speed limit from 45 to 35. There's a lot of studies that have to be done that could go down to 35 miles.
But maybe not so bad to get to 45.
It's a little easier, but I don't know about it. I know in the town and the county, there's a lot of loopholes at lower speed limit.
There was a study done.
I'm not sure in the village.
Sorry. Sorry. There was a study done that checked it. The speed was checked, I think it was about here, about two and a half years ago, and all that data was available. I saw that data, it was sent to me. But it wasn't done here. What I can say is that it's pretty dangerous, a bit of road when somebody's doing 60 miles an hour over that hill.
Yeah.
And this.
So I always like to proceed. I mean, I see, I think of two options right, right now, is want us to work on that speed limit stuff again. And another one would be to, given the condition of the road overall, regardless of speed limit, would be to con, uh, contract with Ruker Milkie to do a study, if there's an option, so what we can do to improve that road. I, I think it's fair to say, we, we don't have the money in the near future to rebuild that road. But it would be nice to make it safer for vehicles, pedestrians, runners, and bicyclists. I, I agree with that completely.
Can we rule out the county before we take action on the village or spend time on the village? Can somebody approach the county and just make sure this isn't something that they should be working on, not us?
Which issue? The speed limit issue?
The speed limit issue.
So, and I, so that basically, it's 55, you're saying, the area you're looking at is from Hillcrest West? Is that what you're saying?
It's actually from 55 from Tipperary to Glenway.
It's, okay.
This section here.
Yeah. So that, yeah, so Glenway, so Glenway to Fish Hatchery, that's town.
Well.
Well, yeah.
What's the maintenance to it, to, to.
No, no. Yeah, but.
But it's a town.
So the question, though, is, it may be that the village is responsible for maintaining the pavement, but who has the authority to deal with the speed limit?
That'd be the town.
I guess that's what I'm trying to get at. So I think.
Yeah.
So the issue is that the speed limit from Glenway to the Fish Hatchery, I think that's in the town boards.
Yeah.
That's not us.
From a jurisdictional standpoint.
Right.
We have no authority to act on that speed limit, I think. The town, what I'm hearing is the town has the authority to work with the county on that? So it's a town-county decision?
Well, we use the county advice.
And you think the board, do you think the town board would be willing to work with the county on lowering that speed limit?
Well, it isn't much the counties, they have a way of, of metering that.
Yeah.
Tell you what the speed limit should be. And we just had that done for Hillcrest, and we wanted to go on 45 there, and it wouldn't work.
Sorry, Mr. Rice, is it? Hillcrest is.
We got 45 on there.
It's, it is 45.
So hopefully, if you got pulled by a cop, if I didn't.
Yeah.
Okay, don't.
So it's posted 45?
Yeah.
We changed that quite a few years ago, before we did that rule.
We, and we went through the same process when Chief Burke was here, and we, we got the speed limit reduced on CC. We go through the same process that Wayne's talking about. It's a county road, it's a little bit different, but yeah.
And that was, we did that before. We did Hillcrest before we do rules and regulations.
So then, so then really, that's an issue to me, that's a town's issue, that's not a village board. But so the issue of hiring Burke and Milkie is, is similar to what we've just done with those two sidewalk studies that we're gonna be presenting to the board. But the question is, what sections of, of Lincoln are we studying? The entire section or the, whatever the village can, I mean, that's, that's what gets tricky on this road.
Yeah.
Because, so the village, if you start at Union, and Jeff, you crypt me from wrong here, you start on Union Road there, we own the sud, no, the north, north side of the road. The south side belongs to the town. You get to right where the, you can kinda tell where it's, Windcrest ends, from there to Glenway, we own the entire road. But from Glenway out to Fish Hatchery, that's all town. We currently maintain all that, but that's what gets weird about it. So the question is, if we, what are we studying, and who's gonna pay for the study, and then who's gonna pay for the improvements, and it gets confusing out there.
And why don't I like bringing up that, would the village consider taking Lincoln Road from Union to Glenway? And then the town would take Glenway on.
You mean, maintenance or everything?
We take the whole road.
Maintenance, ownership.
You know, from the north side.
Yep.
Now, residents that are on the south side, of course, they wanna stay in the town. You know, and tell you, of course, you guys annex the next, we change it, but. Tell them if you guys could take it from Glenway to Union.
Entire road, north and south side of it, yeah. I mean, we all, we all.
You, you'd take the whole road, yes.
Yes.
Just the taxpayers on the south side, just stay with the town, where you have.
So you're suggesting that the, what I, what I hear you saying is that, that right now, since we have this kind of segmented layout in terms of jurisdictional, you're suggesting that Union, uh, from Union to Glenway, we would try and have the jurisdiction be entirely in the village?
Be the whole village, Jeff.
Yeah, just for the width of the road. And then Glenway to Fish Hatchery.
Stays in the town.
That would be the town. But that, is that just in terms of, from a jurisdictional standpoint? Or are you also suggesting that we modify the maintenance agreement to reflect that? Or would the maintenance agreement stay in place as it is, if you did that?
If you guys took it from Union-Lincoln, you'd have maintenance from there. I mean, Union to Glenway.
Yep.
And then we would take it from Glenway to the west.
And that would supersede the.
Agreement.
The maintenance agreement that we. The maintenance agreement that we have.
Cleaner.
And, uh.
Yeah, it makes it a lot cleaner.
I thought it'd make it a lot cleaner. No, I'd have to discuss it with my board.
No, thank you, it's a good suggestion.
Yeah.
What's the cleaner part?
Well, the cleaner part is that right now, again, if you look at that, thanks, thanks for providing the map, it's actually easy. Yeah, Jeff will go through this.
You know, but this valley board, I'm sorry.
We're not giving it back.
Send us the picture.
Check, okay. You know, what I've learned in the year and a half here of, on Lincoln Road is this is kind of the six-headed dragon here. Um, with many different entities and, and permutations on who's kind of controlling what and what's being done where. The, you know, the ownership, obviously, from, from what we show as point A to point B here on the exhibit is currently the, the ownership slash jurisdiction goes to the village of Oregon on the s- uh, north half of the property. The south half is still town jurisdiction.
And so Jeff, you gotta, they can't, you can't see that, actually, I would, can you put the other board up?
So that's from Union Road.
The one that he actually did is easier to see.
From Union Road.
Sorry.
Put that one down below, there you go.
Green that you first approached on the right-hand side.
Correct, correct, well, and it's.
About.
Well, about, it's actually, um, just beyond Mr. Bugless's property over here. But, um, but then it shifts south and then we are the entire right-of-way, including the small area that we have for the water tower, goes all the way out to the western boundary of Bergamot, just beyond the maintenance shed out there. And what, uh, Wayne, I believe, is proposing, obviously, is that the town would, or the village would be responsible from Union Road all the way to Glenway Road, which is also the connection to Rimposhee, correct?
Yes.
And then, and then the town would go, town would be responsible from there to Fish Hatch and beyond which they're already responsible for. The, how best to, to sum this up, I mean, there's, there's a lot of different things that are occurring here, there's, there's roadway maintenance, which obviously is plowing, uh, shoulder dressing, um, pothole repair, crack filling. Am I forgetting anything else? We, we kind of, we took care of a culvert this last year, last year, um, that needed to be repaired. That's roadway maintenance and that's a completely different item than roadway reconstruction. And we're looking at Lincoln Road, which has a twenty-two feet width, the wit- or pavement edge to pavement edge. And twenty-two feet at fifty-five miles an hour, even forty-five mile an hour, is pretty you know, tricky, you know, it, it just makes you feel nervous when people are coming at you at that distance. Part of the agreement, remember, is, is kind of a comparison of Lincoln Road to Netherwood Road. Now, Netherwood Road is twenty-six feet edge of asphalt to edge of asphalt. And that's why when you're driving down Netherwood Road, it feels wider, it feels more comfortable and everything like that. Netherwood Road also has shoulders, you know, a shoulder which it could be up to two feet of gravel and then going off to the ditch. Lincoln Road has almost none of that. And so like, especially if you're riding a bicycle or something like that, there really is no bailout zone, you're, you're in the ditch. So we're, we're really comparing apples to oranges when we're, when we're looking at this. But from the village's standpoint, the responsibility for the village is strictly on maintenance. And that's to maintain it at a level of service of four or better, according to the Pacer scale. Um, four is, in, in the village, when we have a road that is rated three or four, that is usually slated for the next year or two to be completely either reconstructed or have it milled and overlaid and resurfaced. We're not to that point on Lincoln Road yet. And then we maintain Lincoln Road, continue to maintain it up until twenty-twenty-six or at which time Bergamot is eighty percent built out, and they're right at about fifty-three percent built out. So there's a difference when we're talking about maintenance versus reconstruction. Maintaining the road is not very expensive right now for the village. Reconstructing the road is a completely different thing, that would involve a wider roadway surface, shoulders, ditches, prob- possibly relocating utilities.
Land acquisition.
Land acquisition, right-of-way, or additional right-of-way acquisition, possible easement acquisition. And, and I think that's what Mike's talked about, and then we were talking about that this afternoon. Similar to what we've seen with the sidewalk studies we've done, is we really want to be able to get our hands around what are we talking about cost-wise here? You know, if, if we really talk about taking this and trying to flatten out the profile, that's a very significant cost, you know, to really do this right, obviously, is you, you're taking, you're shaving off the tops of the hills and you're filling in the, some of the valleys to create a, a better profile. And it creates better sight distances, but that's very expensive and requires a significant amount of grading, ditches, additional right-of-way and everything like that. And that's not what the village is up for right now, as I understand it. Part of the agreement with the, uh, Bergamot development was that they would be putting fees towards, uh, reconstruction, eventual reconstruction of Lincoln Road. I believe, I do not have the number right, of nine hundred and some thousand dollars.
Nine fifteen, I think.
Just call it nine hundred thousand dollars and change, that would eventually, at the time, uh, of either the reconstruction or at full build-out of Bergamot, would be an escrow, and we do have funds in escrow for that now. But the estimate in two thousand two to completely reconstruct this section just from Union to Glenway, so we're only talking about half of what's shown here on this board, was just a shade over two million. And that's in two thousand two, two thousand two dollars.
Two point two.
Two point two million, in two thousand two dollars. So that's what we're looking at here. Um, I support, uh, the idea, I believe, of, of looking at this from a standpoint as far as looking at the feasibility of, of, um, uh, what type of reconstruction would be necessary. It would look at the profile, a generic, or, uh, not a generic, but a review of the profile along here to take a look at what would be acceptable sight distances for speed. It could look at, uh, a width of, you know, how much, how much can we fit in there, how much can we fit in there with the additional right-of-way that we do have along there already? But I think it would get us better answers.
So when I asked how this would be cleaner, um, I, first of all, I appreciate everything you said, because it resonated with me, every step of it, but I didn't feel like the answer
It's, it's cleaner.
Came through.
If, if Wayne could get his, his town board to agree what he's proposing, it basically takes the south side of Union Road and gives that to the village, so the village owns everything now from Union to Glenway. So when we do the study, when we do the reconstruction, the entire road is in the village and we're not having to go to the town saying, are you willing to do a, a share agreement with us?
So we have more, we have more control over the process when we get to that step.
Right.
So between here and there, what would the cost of that, um, transfer to the village be on an annualized basis?
Well, we're, we, nothing at this point, because we are currently maintaining the road as part of the intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement that's in your packet, so it's, it's gonna, it would continue, but then I think Wayne is proposing that the, that we're, right now, we're maintaining the road from, also from Glenway out to Fish Hatchery, that would go away. If the village would take over that southern part of Union Road.
So there would be no additional cost to do, to take over that part of, from Union Road?
It's already in the budget, in a way, Jeff, yeah.
When you guys do, if we leave it the way it is, when the town takes it back, you guys have to bring it up to standards anyway, so you're gonna have money into it at the end anyway.
All the way from Union to Fish Hatch, right? We have to, we'd have to resurface it?
Resurfacing, but not reconstruction, yeah.
Bring it back to where it was before you took.
Probably a mill and overlay is what it would be.
But, so if you start looking at it now.
Wayne, we should probably hand you a, a microphone.
Hand it, I can't.
Hand it to Wayne. I know, but I hear if people can't hear.
I, seriously, I think you guys could spend a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five thousand and re-grind it, pave it, you get a two-foot shoulder on each side, pretty easy. That would get you by seven, ten years until you could budget for it and decide what you want to do and Bergamot be more built out. That's just a recommendation or a thought. Grinding and overlaying, not that expensive. It's about a hundred thousand a mile.
In a way, that's what we did on Netherwood.
Yeah.
And I think we talked to the, Mark, when Mark was here, we talked to the board, we, we went to the whole idea, do we do a reconstruction or do a mill and overlay? And that's what we did, knowing that at some point, future property owners will help pay for the, uh, reconstruction of West Netherwood, so. Same, same cost.
Something needs to be done. I, I think you're pretty generous by giving it a six.
Yeah, I did too.
I thought, I figured about a four, that's.
Yeah.
And I went to school for this about a few years ago to, to do that.
Yeah.
But anyway, it is what it is. But you could, you could, uh, re-grind that and lay a four inches of blacktop. And you'd have no problem getting another two-foot shoulder on each side, which would take that road one smoother, safer, until you guys come up with a plan to something, because that would just be a recommendation.
What do you think, Jeff, for that?
Judging from what we have as far as out there for, for ditches, um, there are certain areas where that, that I think that would work and other areas where it wouldn't. I think is, that's part of what we're talking about as far as having a feasibility of that level evaluation of it, that kind of gives us that confidence of whether or not we are talking about a a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project or whether it's five, six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollar project. You know, we also are talking about, uh, you know, potential future improvements that, you know, as, um.
Huh? Elevations.
Well, elevations, but I mean, as, as Bryn Hill's finished through and the connection of that, that will be improved up until, up, up to about what, another, what, six, seven hundred feet of, of, uh, urban section along there right now.
That's right.
So that's an improvement that we will likely be seeing in the next two years. You know, the, I think the, one of the things that is, is the most concern is, is, or some of the most concern of the hill out at, uh, Bergamot entrance, as you go down, as you go over the top of that hill and down past Glenway and then, um, as you start to go over the next two hills, those, um, I don't, I don't have a good feel for how much, you know, room we have out there for a ditch. But you're right, if, you know, if the ditch, if there's room out there, you can do some grading and it's not going to be a permanent fix, but it'll be a, an improvement.
So, do we have Rook and Milky look at just that option and, and see the feasibility of what Wayne has recommended and what the cost would be?
You wouldn't even have to have that, you can call Peanut Dolan and they got this stuff hired. People will do that for nothing.
Okay. You should come more often.
Four or three different, um, paving companies, they'll come out and tell you, and then you can compare the three. I'm just trying to say again.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
But they all have their own engineers and they'll come out and tell you what to do.
Sorry.
We do that ourselves. We start with Pam Dumpy with the county and then we go from there.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, Mr. Chen, so would that be just out to Glenway and not going west from Glenway? Because that would be your responsibility. So would you do the same thing?
Not this year.
Not this year?
No, yeah, I don't know, I don't know when that'd be in the future. We got, some other rules we gotta do in the next two years, for sure.
Jeff, to clarify, isn't the IG agreement to go all the way out to the maintenance shed? Past Glenway?
Past, the, the intergovernmental agreement goes out to Fish Hatchery Road.
Are those funds accessible at all prior to twenty-twenty-six?
They're accessible when the village is, what I don't remember, Jeff, is looking at the language of the agreement, you were referring to using those funds for reconstruct.
Reconstruction.
I thought we could use those funds even for, if we were gonna do the mill and overlay, if we were gonna do that from like Union to Fish Hatch, we could use those.
You can.
We, we were gonna ask you to look at that, because we're not sure about that.
So we, I think.
Would you do that pro bono?
Why not, you know, let's just, let's just.
It does help the budget, doesn't it?
Yeah, that's not in the budget.
That's not.
Well, that's one of the, one of the things we have to figure out is how much flexibility do we have in terms of our, how, what can we use the dollars for?
But, yeah, I think.
I don't have, I, I looked at it last week and I, I just don't recall. So there's a whole lot of moving parts to this, I mean, you know, what section of the road to look at, do you just focus on Union to Glenway and then have the town take the other part? We do this jurisdictional transfer, so we, we got quite a few things we're talking about here.
The one thing I say that is, is very positive in all of this, of the area we're talking about that we would be talking about any kind of shoulder work and everything like that in the immediate future, would be the stuff that's already all within our jurisdiction and ownership. From, you're correct, you know what I mean, it's from, from Glenway east. And, um, we're already owning the entire right-of-way for that, so it's not like I just, there would have to be significant work between the town and the village to proceed with something like that.
I think it'd be a pretty easy process right now to change things around.
Right.
What, Wayne, if you don't mind me asking, what comes along with the easements if you were to propose that to your board? How does that work? I mean, if you're, is, is there ten feet south of the edge of, of the pavement or how does that?
It's to the right-of-way, so we're actually on the, uh, north side of Bergamot. We have forty feet from the center line of the roadway and to the south side of Berg- sorry, Lincoln. Um, and to the south side of Lincoln, we have a con- a some of it's thirty-three feet, most, it, most of it's minimum thirty-three feet, some of it has been, uh, up to forty feet. That road is, is planned eventually for an eighty-foot right-of-way the entire route, and so as development has occurred, we've acquired that additional seven feet above the thirty-three feet from the center line to give us forty feet from the center line.
Both directions.
Both directions, but
Trying to get to eighty feet.
But to the south, we do not have.
Yeah, but most likely that would, that will not happen until the village would annex, if we would annex to the south side of Lincoln Road.
Correct.
Like when you, North Alpine Park, when you drive in, that actually is the two center lanes of a road that would eventually be four lanes, for example.
And now there was one six wide, six foot wide because it was a bike trail.
Yeah.
At one time.
Yeah.
What's the speed limit on Netherwood? It's a matter of interest. Forty-five. And that's not hilly and it's, it's four foot wider.
Nobody said government makes sense, right?
Yeah, right.
So do we proceed with, uh, as Wayne suggested, have three, um, companies come in and give suggestions on what, like the town does? Have that come back to us? And how does that satisfy your request at the present time? Should we be looking at adding probably, looking at two-foot blacktop shoulder, right?
Um, on both sides?
I would gravel.
I'm just thinking of people that are biking.
Well.
If you're gonna do that, then you're gonna do a lot more cost. Because then you gotta get, you gotta get a base underneath that. What I said is you could grind.
What's there?
An overlay and have twenty-two feet plus two more feet on each side of the road, a good shoulder. That I can see.
And the two feet would be gravel shoulder.
Yeah.
You're only, you're only, basically, you're only upgrading the, the existing asphalt surface and adding a, a refuge
Right.
Shoulder.
Right.
Yeah.
Which is what, that's what our county rules are, twenty-two feet.
Yeah.
With two feet of gravel.
Okay. Does that sound like a reasonable place to start, Matt and Trevor?
Certainly an improvement, yeah.
Yeah.
Guess the big question falls on your guys' plates as to how do you factor this out for the long run?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, if, if there's nothing in the budget right now, but you've got something that's gonna come up by two thousand twenty-six, what's on the docket or is this gonna fit into the schedule at some point in time coming up to that? Right? I mean, I get it.
Everything never fits.
I, I understand.
It's in the, it's in the long-term, we do a five-year capital improvement plan. It's on the, it's on the long-term side of that. I mean, we, 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 we have, we know we have to at some point have to do something on a more permanent basis with Lincoln Road.
So, yeah, I think it's definitely an improvement, I think we'd love that, but at the same point in time, from the village's perspective and we're all taxpayers, we want you guys to be smart about not spending money and then having to spend money again in three or four years, too, so.
I mean, now I'm an engineer, so I am not gonna try to push engineer too much, but, you know, I, I'm kind of a very, I'm a very strong advocate for making sure we've studied something and the alternatives as well as the costs. Um, I agree with Wayne as far as like, I think, you know, we could have Peanut Dolan, we could have, uh, the other names escaping me off the top of my head, but. Speedway or somebody come in and they would, they would give us a cost to basically just come in and grade, grade a shoulder and provide a mill and overlay and stuff like that, and I think that would be fairly economical, but I don't know if that really buys us too far down the road in a, in a true solution. Whereas, um, I think, you know, that could be part of an option to be considered in a, in a feasibility analysis, but we would also be looking at what are we looking at if we're trying, if we want to go for a, a twenty-four foot roadway, which is more realistic, or a twenty-six foot roadway with a two-foot shoulder on either side, four-to-one ditches, and then, um, you know, and how far out we would carry that. Or as another alternative, I think we talked about the other day, you know, that, one of the concerns is access from, uh, we call it South Bergamot there at the entrance to Lincoln Road, back into the village, could be an off-street path. And, you know, something that's completely, uh, you know, outside of the other side of the ditch that would connect down to the sidewalk area there, down there at the end of Leeward. So those are the kind of things I think that, that could be evaluated to make sure that we're making the right decision. I think the overall cost, I mean, we're even at the cost of looking at a, um, a mill and overlay and shoulder dressing, if you say, let's say it's a hundred and fifty, two hundred If you say, let's say it's a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars, I estimate a study would probably be in the, what did we say, between five to ten thousand dollars? You know, that's pretty small money compared to what we would be investing. Bare minimum is gonna be a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. We would have to invest in that. That's just my opinion, but, uh, if, if we wanna go out and get, you know, three quotes from, from some individuals, uh, I have no problem doing that as well.
I guess if you're gonna go that direction, I would ask that you also look at that last option you brought up, which would be something more like the learner conservancy to say there's a separate bike.
You're talking about the one on net, on Netherwood, along Netherwood?
No, I'm talking about the actual, not, not adjoining the pavement, but a separate
Yeah.
walk-in pathway, which if you're gonna spend dollars now, maybe you spend it there and template something to be more significant on the actual road down the, down the way.
Absolutely. So, I, I, actually, I'm sort of sticking with Jeff saying, I think Wayne's got a really good idea, but I also asked the board to give us permission to contact Rooker and Milky and bring back an RFP. I, I, I think we should be smart about, not, not that Wayne's idea isn't smart, but I think we should look at that option, but look at these other options as well before we spend the money.
You guys got more money than we got, that's why we got.
Yeah, I like Jeff's idea with Mike's support too, to have Rooker Milky, uh, come back with a proposal, uh, to take a look at this and look what the options are and do the best job we can with, right now with the dollars we wanna spend. And see how, how that also impacts us going forward, like Matt said, that we don't wanna do something now that lasts two years, I have to do something else right away. Let's see what's the best fit going forward and what's the best way to use our dollars, would be my thought.
If we can get a price, we can, we can do the shoulder. We can, with the village's help, we can do the shoulder.
Okay.
Thank you.
Gravel.
Yeah. Yeah, you've got that equipment. Yeah.
Just got your cost of your.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, but this would still only go up to Glenway, right? I'm an engineer too and I'm trying to get it clear.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'd have a, whatever happens, we'd have an improved section from Union to Glenway.
Or to Bergamont, depending on how far out it carries exactly.
Yeah, but beyond that, it wouldn't be done. So we can have a nice piece of road and whatever we decide to do, or you guys decide to do, then it's gonna be as is now as I'm hearing from Mr. Ace, going west from there, which seems strange to me. Why the town and village can't get their heads together and say, let's do this whole road section together between?
No, it's, has to do with money. Yeah.
Like you said, the village has more dollars, not enough, but we have more than.
I don't think anyone disagrees with the fact that, you know, there's some safety issues and, and that, and, and I mean, and obviously we had and now like I say in my memo, you know, something that I think there are extenuating circumstances, you know, but we did have a death there.
It was nothing to do with speed though.
Huh?
It was nothing to do with speed.
Had nothing to do with speed, but I'm just saying, any one of us who have ridden, have ridden their bikes or run or anything, it's kinda like avoid Lincoln Road. That's, that's been the, you know, kind of the understanding and I think it's still good advice. Um, but it's, it's, you know.
How do you do that though, seriously? If you wanna go out to Paoli and west, how do you get there without going up Lincoln Road and then up Judd and?
Go through Bergamont, take CC.
Yeah.
CC?
CC takes you right to Sun By.
That's worse.
Yeah.
Well, it was in terms of speed.
Right.
You guys do what you gotta do, but if you want, if you wanna think about chasing that road, you know, get back to me.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne. You're a huge help. Appreciate you being here.
Thanks, Wayne.
So I guess the, uh, the thing to decide, we wanna, uh, get an RFP from, uh, Rooker and Milky to take a look at this or not?
Is that a motion?
Sure.
I'll second it.
Okay. Further discussion?
Do we wanna set a, a certain price on that?
Do you, Wayne?
I don't.
We're just gonna, we're, we're gonna bring it back. We're not, we're not, we're not approving anything. We're gonna actually just get it.
It's more than we'd like and we don't do it.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Any further questions or discussion? So the motion second is to, um, contact Rooker and Milky with the request for proposal to take a look at options on Lincoln Road from Union to Glenway. Sorry about that. That's all we control.
And the options would include what?
Whatever they come up with, they're the engineers.
So they would also include an off-road path?
We can ask them to do that, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would include that as a, I'd like to include that.
Yeah.
I'll put together a, a request for proposal.
Jeff, I'll put the details and send that out.
If it's approved, of course.
Yeah. Looks like we'll be. The way the heads are nodding. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Put that pass. So, one thing I suggest that, that, uh, the residents might wanna do is to start to work on that speed limit with the county. Contact Pam Dum, Pam Dumphy and put some pressure on her.
Thank you.
Take that on in, like.
Yeah, I mean, to me, like I said, I think forty-five's too high. If we can get that fifty-five, stretch change to forty-five, that would help, I think. But pressure from, from residents might be better than us. Now, you guys didn't ask me about that. Give me the sign.
Would you know off the top of your head how that center line is striped? Is that a solid yellow stripe end to end or?
There's no stripe.
There's no center line.
There's no line.
No center line, fifty-five.
There's no center line.
Wayne has talked about that before, that that's, they do that on purpose because they want folks to drive in the middle of the road and not break up the se, yeah, it's a town thing.
Yep.
Very interesting. It's an interesting approach.
It's a six-headed dragon.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
We'll move forward with it. Thanks for being here, appreciate it. Good job.
And this pro bono as well, by the way.
Looked like a piece of insulation, right? May have been a piece of insulation.
Yeah, could we, could, and could we do nine C then, Wayne Mac and Lee then? Do nine B and C?
Yeah.
Okay. Cause we're, we're not gonna do, we're not gonna do close sessions, Steve.
Okay, yeah, right. Okay, so we're gonna go to item nine, communication miscellaneous business and skip to B. Cause Chief Ull has another commitment he needs to leave for, so item B, discussion possible action. Intergovernmental agreement between the County of Dane and the Village of Oregon for records management system. Uh, the recommended motion is to approve that agreement between the County of Dane and the Village of Oregon for records management system.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Chief?
So, pardon the extra heat, boys, that was a little cold on. The intergovernmental agreement we've been working on with the county for several months now is part of the records management system. It's really, just to break it down, it's, uh, lays out the expectations for both, uh, police department and the county and how we interact with each other uh, regarding the joint records management system. Uh, it kinda just explains, uh, what each entity expects of each other and what we can and can't do as it relates to contacting Spillman making changes to the RMS and that type of thing. So it's fairly similar in, uh, content as far as what, uh, we do now with the city of Madison. This'll just out be with the county.
Questions, comments?
So we replace an earlier agreement with, with the city?
Well, the city, yeah, we're gonna, uh, come the end of June, I will turn in a termination letter to the city. And so after twenty seventeen, we'll no longer have an agreement with the city.
Anything else, anyone? Okay, so we have the motion second to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the County of Dane and Village of Oregon for records management system. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Excused?
I appreciate that.
Item C then, next one?
Yes, please.
Okay. So also we've got item C, discussion possible action regarding Oregon Community Resource Network and Oregon Area Food Pantry's donation request for constructing a new building. Is there somebody here to represent that?
Um, I, I don't believe so.
No, I don't think so.
Just the, the letter is basically asking for a one-time contribution of two thousand.
Yeah.
And reason Matt's here, just in case there's any, um, I was talking to Matt this afternoon about, you know, if the board wants to do something, you can declare it as a public purpose, you know, you have to meet the public, public purpose document, if I can say it.
Okay.
We're okay, we're okay with that, right, Matt?
Yes, uh, I don't see any concern with finding that, uh, this donation would serve a public purpose. Uh, it's clearly, it clearly would.
Yeah.
So that's not an issue. It's really just a question of whether or not the village has the funds and wants to do it.
Okay. Do we have the funds?
It, it would come out of contingency.
Okay, okay.
How would that affect the budget going forward?
It, it would come out of contingency and if, if we had some emergency that exceeded contingency, we'd have to come back to the board and try to find.
How much do we normally budget for contingency?
Here's twenty thousand.
Yeah, I think there's about twenty thousand in it first of the year.
Okay, so that would use up half of it.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And what did we spend last year out of that fund?
I haven't done all the budget amendments yet, but, I mean, we spent it all last year because we went way over in legal fees, so it's gone.
All right, so.
And we budgeted more for legal fees for seventeen.
Right.
Does that include the pro bono stuff?
Yeah.
That's easy to track.
Thanks.
Yeah, I don't really know where else, I was thinking about today, and you were gonna ask me that, or Jerry wasn't asking me that, where we're gonna pay for it.
Well, I kinda did, didn't I?
I know that.
Yeah, I wanted to beat him to it.
He beat him to it, yeah.
Are you, are you okay with this, Mike? Okay, and Lisa, are you?
Sure.
Okay.
I am. Now, I think it's a great, a great, uh, addition to our community. Uh, it'd be located on the, uh, the property of the People's United Methodist Church on the west side. They're donating the property. It just brings a lot of pluses, uh, for a lot of residents. I'd say thirty-five percent of those served are, uh, children and
Yeah.
Forty percent are children, another thirty-five percent are adults over sixty-five, so seventy-five percent are children over sixty-five, so there's clear, clear need there. If you ever worked at the food pantry, uh, I, I have volunteered there one time when our church had us filled in and I was amazed at the number of people. And what's a wealthy county. So, I support this. Anyone wish to make the motion?
I would. I would second it.
Okay, thank you. Discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
And as a, just a quick point, um, I've been asked to help out on the twenty-seventh with their fundraiser and I don't think there's a conflict, but we just thought we'd bring it up just to make sure that there is no concern over that.
Uh, who made the motion?
I think Doug did.
Doug made the motion, right?
Jerry seconded.
Jerry made the motion, Doug seconded, okay.
Jerry.
Okay. And, and aside there, uh, Jeff has given great leadership on this and, uh, which is why he abstained because he has no part in what happens here. So good for you. Humble question, thank you.
Thank you.
So is this a pledge that when they do construct it, we will give them the money or how does this work?
So add this to what they have, uh, in contributions that they know of right now, right?
That was a very question Matt and I were talking about.
I mean, do, do we, do we wait until the building starts going up or? Well, I think, uh, as I understand it, the group has requested a contribution now and, uh, they're going to be using the dollars that they receive as leverage to, cause they've got an anonymous donor, I believe, or a donor who is, they're, uh, willing to match what the organization can raise. I think you should check with the organization to verify this, the details on when they need the money. Uh, but my sense is they need the money, uh, in order to, um, in order to get that additional contribution. Excuse me for one second?
Yeah.
Yep, hi.
I guess my concern would be is if, is there a bond or something or insurance on these funds that are being collected in the event that, for whatever reason, it doesn't happen?
That was, that was, that's what Matt and I were talking about, uh, this afternoon. You know, I, I know Jeff and I had a meeting with, uh, with Dan and Larry Mar back last year. I, I'm pretty confident they're gonna build the building.
Yeah.
I, but, you know, things can happen, you know, and, um, I just made a note, I, I will, um, email Randy.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm in value job.
Thank you.
Email, email Randy and just tell him, I'll, I'll ask him for about timing and I'll report back to the board. How about that?
No, I think it's a great cause. I'm just trying to cover our liability.
Absolutely.
Possible liability.
It's public, it's public money, so we gotta be careful with it.
Right, right, that's my point.
Thank you, Jerry. But I, I'll, I'll email Randy and I'll, I'll put on the next agenda to report back to you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so we're on to item five, approval of minutes. Uh, we have minutes from November thirty, two thousand sixteen, special board meeting for approval.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any additions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we have vouchers tonight in the amount of one million, eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-nine cents for approval.
So move, second.
Thank you. Questions?
Yes, I have a question. Um, uh, the number is seven, five, nine, zero, the youth center electricity.
Oh, yeah, that seven, five, nine, zero, that's actually part of a, a claim. There was someone who, uh, with their vehicle hit the youth center building earlier this year and there were some repairs that had to be done and moving of an electrical cabinet during those repairs. So those, the, that, that's something we will get, be getting paid back through our, through their insurance company.
Oh, good, okay. Also, I have, uh, nine, eight, eight, two. The, uh, garbage collector. Now, that, that amount we paid, is that for the whole year then?
No, that's one month.
That's just, the, the, there were two of those. There's one, one, two, three.
One is trash and one is recycling and then the third one is the.
That's only for a single month?
Yes, and, and then the third one is, is when, when, depending on fuel cert, depending on the price of the fuel, they either, we either pay a little extra or we get a credit back based off of, uh, some consumer pricing that's on fuel at that time or something.
If it's under two ninety-nine or something like that.
But then, the, all, all the community pays in?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
And that would?
Yeah, then, and that's, we use that money to pay palatary.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so we have a motion of second to approve vouchers in the amount of one million, eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-nine cents. Roll call, please.
Staten?
Yes.
Hudrow?
Yes.
Grenier?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Bolig?
Yes.
Brett Howard?
Yes.
Thank you, that carries. Item seven is community input. Anyone who wishes to address the board tonight who's in the audience? Uh, seeing none, we'll go to item eight, proclamations and announcements. Uh, A, any board comments?
Uh, we have an upcoming swearing-in of the fire chief. Uh, and that information's gonna come to you, Mike, so that you can post it.
Okay.
In case we'd all like to go.
Sure.
Um, and I suppose once you post it, it would make its way to the village website as well?
Yep, oh, yeah.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other board comments? Seeing none, we'll go to item B, staff comments. Item one, recognizing wastewater treatment plant staff. Jeff?
Right, I just wanna personally commend our three wastewater staff, Cal Anderson, Sonny Samu and Jill Thomason. Um, for, uh, just commendations they receive and continued, uh, good reports we get back from DNR. Um, they do a very, very nice job of maintaining our plant and, uh, more importantly, maintaining the affluent limits that we have to, uh, that we're held to. And, uh, they do a very nice job and probably a thankless job on most days, um, but, uh, they do a great job and we're recognized by that. So I wanna let you know.
Thanks.
Got that feedback.
And, and the track record on this evaluation has always been, as it is right now, it's always been really high.
Exactly.
Thanks to them. Okay, item two on the recount reimbursement, Peggy?
We, uh, submitted a, uh, claim basically to the county for about eighteen hundred dollars for the recount. Um, I have not seen that yet, but it is to them and hopefully we'll see it soon. I don't know if anybody has any questions about any of that, but.
Questions? Okay, no, we will go to, uh, item three. Again, Peggy, upcoming elections?
Um, we'll know for sure in the next day or two, but it looks like there will be a February, um, spring primary, um, on the twenty-first. And we will also have the election on April fourth. Incumbents Jeannie Carpenter, Darlene Grenier and Steve Staten are running along with Jenna Jacobson and Michael Stapleton.
Thank you.
What, can I ask, what will the primary be for? Do you know yet?
Um, it is actually for the state superintendent
Oh.
of public instruction.
Okay.
Okay, item four, upcoming meetings?
Yeah, the committee meeting, uh, next week, Monday, and then the second board meeting of the month, and then Nikki's having the, uh, meeting with the chamber and the village board at the library on the, on the thirtieth. And we will, we'll definitely post that as a board gathering.
Okay. Do we make any comments about that right now, or?
Just that I've heard back from most, but not all of you regarding whether or not you'll be in attendance, so I might follow up with, with you if I haven't heard.
Okay, thank you.
And the last thing is that there are two vacancies on the park board, Steve. I just wanted to, if village residents are interested, they would please contact me.
Yeah, there's a one-page, simple form to fill out. We'll go from there, so. So if you know people that might be interested, feel free to mention that to them. Takes us back to item nine, communication and miscellaneous business. Item A is the library director's December report. Nikki, you're on.
All right, well, thank you, everyone, and please pardon my voice, recovering from a cold. So, what you have shared with you in your packet is the December director's report to the library board. So some of it is a little bit dated. I'm going to try to concentrate on some select items. Specifically, the first large piece of the report details a number of grants that the library is benefiting from, from the Beyond the Page program in the year twenty seventeen. I mentioned last month that Kelly Allen secured a programming grant for teens and tweens. In addition to that, we have some other humanities events coming up. Page to Stage outside Mullenberg Play Club, that's our newest one coming up, be at January seventeenth at six P.M., and we have great sign up for that so far, but if you are interested in it, I'd recommend coming into the library. There are six copies of the script available. Basically, what it is, is similar to a book club, except that you read the, the, the play, and then professional actors come in and act it out, and lead a discussion about that work. We're working with the senior center to provide stories of Fiddler on the Roof in February. And in March, there's going to be someone who will come and discuss, it's a UW saxophone professor discussing Charlie Parker. And then, I don't have the dates yet, but there's also a program on punishing the poor, and another one on the horse-human connection. We've just today set a date for the horse-human connection, one that will be October third. So, in addition to that, I informed the board about the upcoming community conversation, the purpose of that, which is to basically get more insight into what different segments of the community over time, what they would like to see from the community, and have that assist us with our strategic planning. Other updates, we have the tax, new tax assistance program that is coming to the library. We're really, really excited about this. It's called VIDA, Volunteer Income Tax Assistance. On January twelfth and nineteenth, from noon to five, you can come, you have to come in, in person to set up an appointment, which is for a later date that will be in end of January through April. But they will provide free income tax assistance for, and I'm gonna list a number of different groups here. Low to moderate income individuals, individuals with disabilities, non-English speakers, military personnel, senior individuals, and individuals who qualify for the home state credit or the earned income credit. So that's a really huge swath of the population, and, you know, it's always a benefit to be able to have that provided at no cost.
Yeah, sounds like a great service.
So, we're very excited about that. Also, you have a number of statistics outlined. We have the numbers through November, through the end of November here. I will point out on the program attendance page, it's hard to tell the exact numbers, but for November, we had one thousand six hundred and eighty-two individuals attend our programs at the library. The door count one, I will point out that the numbers on that are somewhat confusing at best because of the technology that's used to, for the door counters. We've gone through a number of different methodologies, and right now, it used to be that past practice was to estimate some of the traffic based on the numbers that we were getting. We knew we weren't getting everyone. Now we're just reporting the numbers as they appear, so that's why you see a dip from twenty fifteen in particular, but some from twenty fourteen as well. We know we're missing people. We know we're not getting everyone. We're still having fantastic numbers. I mean, there's, just shy of, shy of ten thousand people came to use the library just based on this alone in the month of November, so. But just to kind of explain the anomaly there. Our other numbers are staying, by and large, very solid. If you average them out over the course of the year, our Wi-Fi use, which is of course free and twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, is just keeps growing astronomically. People need that to do pretty much anything these days. If there are no questions on that, I do have an info bit to share as requested last time. Were there any questions on the numbers before I move ahead with my educational moment of the meeting?
Educators.
Okay, awesome. So tonight, I am going to share with you some information on the Friends of the Library organization, what it is and what it means to the library and the community. Friends organizations are basically a group of citizens who join together to support, improve, and promote the library, and they exist in many communities throughout Wisconsin. Some friends organizations, such as our own, are formerly incorporated. Ours is an official, not-for-profit body, filed as a five oh one C three with its own bylaws and articles. They're a group of volunteers who actively support the library in a number of ways, and they get to choose the ways in their bylaws that they see fit. So, our friends offer financial, friends in general offer financial support. Ours in particular focus on summer library and general programming funding. And they will also consider other special purpose requests from, that come from the library board and director, but those mainly exclude capital needs or regular operating expenses. They advocate for the library and its budget through their newsletter and other outreach efforts, and they provide volunteer assistance. Specifically, they focus on the care and handling of our library gardens, which we get many fine compliments on. It makes the library a very welcoming place, as well as recruiting volunteers for other purposes. In twenty sixteen alone, volunteers, though not all volunteer members are Friends members, volunteers contributed a total of eight hundred and seven hours of their time. So that's a great benefit for the library, what we're able, and what we're able to offer to the community. Often asked question, what is the distinction between a Friends of the Library group and a Library Foundation? So I'm gonna read this to make sure I get it correct. The primary distinction between these two is that a Library Foundation will typically have a single purpose, to raise private funds for the support of the library, often including support for library building projects. That is not what we have. What we have is a Friends organization. Whereas a Friends organization often raise money to supplement the library's budget, they focus more broadly on the support of the library through volunteer work in the library and library advocacy. For those that are interested in participating, it's just a five-dollar annual individual fee, and then there are other levels for organizations or, you know, higher level contributions that can be made as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Any questions on that?
Comments, anyone? Okay, thanks, Nikki, appreciate it. So we've done nine B and nine C, takes us to nine D, and refers to the former Methodist Church property. We have closed on that as planned in two thousand sixteen, so we now own that, and it's part of looking forward for our civic campus plan, so. Item E, discussion possible action, and that's on approval of People's United Methodist Church Facility Use Request Form in the amount of three hundred dollars for two elections in two thousand seventeen. That's the same as in two thousand sixteen. So any motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Questions, discussion? We do this every year for elections.
Steve, I just wanna go back to the church property. You see it's all tore down. The church is gone?
Is it really?
Yeah.
Was there yesterday, right?
In, in the
I just walked by, it was there yesterday.
Yeah.
They started yesterday.
I took pictures today and sent it to the paper.
Okay.
The, well, the, it's taken down to the level of the, the first floor.
Yeah.
And everything, so yeah, it looks completely different.
It was a surprise, yeah.
Yeah, good, I'm glad you mentioned that.
You didn't want it, did you?
What's that?
You didn't want it, did you?
No, I had plenty of chances, I chose not to.
It's too late.
Yeah. Anything else on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Information, fifty-five hundred Lincoln Road separating the existing residents from farmland and field entrance permit. Still allowed for a lot for a house, right? Item G, Youth Center, October, November, and December activity reports. Again, thanks to Diane Nuland, Nuland for getting those and for her leadership in keeping that place busy and active. It's a great place for kids. So, lasted much longer than most youth centers do. You know, it's very vital. She's been there, I think, almost six years now. And that, that's one of the big reasons why. Item H, discussion possible action. Need a motion to appoint to the library board Kyle Severson, the term expiring in two thousand eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I met with, we had two applicants for that position. I met with both. They're both very good candidates. I felt that Kyle brought a couple of things that would be real beneficial to the library board, and so I'm bringing him forward for appointment with the library board. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item I, discussion possible action regarding North Borough Street project. Additional engineering and Jefferson Street water main replacement. Recommended motion is to approve amendment number one to the North Borough contract with Town and Country Engineers, the amount of twenty-nine hundred dollars for additional services, providing the design and permitting for the culvert replacement on the Oregon branch of the Badfish Creek at North Borough Avenue.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Comments here, Jeff?
When we started this project, we actually had not planned to replace the culvert. But what we, what we wanted to accomplish was reduce the frequency at which it floods across there. In order for us to be able to do that, we wanna raise the roadway profile a little more, but we can't do that without increasing the size of the culvert. So that's why we've just had some additional engineering to do the culvert replacement.
Okay. So questions or comments here? So we have the motion second for the contract with Town and Country Engineers, the amount of twenty-nine hundred dollars for additional services. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Recommended motion to approve amendment number two to the North Borough contract with Town and Country Engineers, the amount of forty-two thousand, four hundred dollars for design and construction services for the Jefferson Street Water Main project to be completed in two thousand seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, this is actually kind of economy of scale here. The Jefferson Street reconstruction is part of the county project this next coming year, so we know we have to do the water main. As it aligns with the North Borough project being put into twenty seventeen, they're actually, and there's water main project, our water main on that project as well. There's, there's this savings we believe that we can achieve by having one engineering firm design it, have one contractor, one contract done, and save, we think, some, some funds for the village. So that's why we're recommending that they be given the amendment to design the water main for this.
Okay. Questions or comments? So again, we have motion second to approve amendment number two to the North Borough contract with Town and Country Engineers, the amount of forty-two thousand, four hundred dollars for design and construction services for the Jefferson Street Water Main project to be completed in two thousand seventeen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item ten, reported committees, A, B, and C, we have park board minutes from three meetings coming forward to us. We don't need to approve those, I just wanted to point that out, that they are catching up on those. Takes us to item D, December seventh park board meeting, trustee Doug Brett Hauer. So you're on, Doug.
The recommended motion is to approval, approve Oregon Youth Baseball Installing signs on stats and Faust ball fields to recognize donors to the, the baseball association.
So, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, we have motion second to approve Oregon Youth Baseball installing signs on stats and Faust ball fields. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item two, Doug?
Does JSD wanna make a presentation first, or?
I'm sorry, Doug.
I asked if JSD is here to make a presentation first?
This is just a recommendation to accept the plan for, or the study for planning recommendations.
Okay. At its last meeting, the parks board recommended acceptance of the plan, so the motion would be accept recommendations for planning purposes. Village staff is also recommending that in two thousand seventeen, the village begin to prepare for installing the two most westerly fields along North Alpine Parkway, and the board may want to add this to the motion as well.
Okay, so we have that as a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Comments, questions?
Any question? If you, I don't know if you have a chance, had a chance to look at the, the plan, and what we're seeing is that we would do Jeff, could you, could you move your, that one map, please, thank you. Actually, maybe when you update, you wanna maybe show, we're, we're talking about is doing basically phase one A, which is the two fields along North Alpine Parkway. And then the, possibly the parking lot, right? Yep, and then have to deal with the, the culvert or swale that's in there.
Yeah.
Because the, the two fields there to the east will be, will require quite a bit of grading. And so we're, we have some other ideas how to, we're trying to create four or five additional playing fields in, on the west side of the village, and we think this is a good place to start.
Okay.
Is there an impact to revenue? Is that currently leased farmland?
Yep.
And what do you figure that would be annually?
It's like it's a hundred twenty-five.
Yeah, something like Yeah, we, we're making a little over two thousand for the year.
A year?
It's, it's not, you know. But we're, I mean, what I'm, Jeff, I wanna make sure, I'm not saying we're installing the fields this year, we're, we just, you know, we wanna start
Yeah.
Just so the board's kinda on board, so to speak, that we're gonna start working on it. This'll come back to the board and the park board numerous times.
Eventually, those improvements will happen, and they'll be paid for with park fees, right?
Those, those improvements will eventually be paid by the village having to borrow money. There's no way that we're collecting that type of park fees that will cover all that, Jerry. The park fees will pay for some of the things, but not, not the total project, no. It would, it would be part of the CIP program that you'll see at some point.
So really, that area too is where, in the future, there's gonna be a school, right?
Yep, to the, you're right, darling, to the south there, yep.
Yeah, it shows it there.
We'd have a, we'd have a joint parking lot with them at some point, yep.
That's a, kind of that white rectangle. That map is in our packet also.
Yeah, right.
Identifies the school.
But also, Pittsburgh is going to be, be up, building a school within two years. Did you hear that?
Yep, and, but the school district is still interested in holding on to the property.
Yeah, okay.
I think, I think they're going, I don't mean to speak for the district here, but I think they're, they're going through a phase to start studying future school needs and use and they're wanting out of the property, my understanding.
Do you think a project like that, would the school district partner with the village, considering that those could be used for school functions?
We, we could ask them. I mean, we, we certainly have planned on, in between south of the four fields and, and north of the school is a, is a joint parking lot that we're gonna share, so yeah, that's interesting. We could, we could ask them, sure.
I think the plan was to share the playground, too.
The playground, too.
If it was a permanent school, it'd be kind of a, a village community.
Yeah.
Or school playground.
Yeah, we could ask them.
Maybe you could plant the trees now.
Not ash.
Ash, just gonna say ash, man, thank you for picking up
They grow the fastest. They grow the fastest.
Yeah.
Okay, so any further discussion pertaining to this item?
Just one question. In Perrin's, the village staff is recommending the board may want to add this to this motion. Is that something that we're doing?
Yeah, I think Doug, yeah, I was gonna clarify that.
Mike, for that, for that phase one A, do we have, is there, is that relocating any ponds or not?
We do not think we would need to do that.
Okay.
And that, and that's
Because that's the expensive parts.
That's a great question. Those, those are the two expenses that will be, is doing the two Easter, essentially, fields and moving the pond. It, it, it's a great idea to about moving the pond, but that's gonna be expensive. So no, we, we think we can do this without having to move the pond at this point.
Yeah, yeah, because there's a lot of wildlife, and I've had a lot of residents express concern to me about disrupting that. Even, even though I've tried to explain, that was always sort of a temporary plan, what's there now.
Well, we could get some feedback about not having it in corn, either, people love walking to the cornfield, and so, you know, if we don't have corn there at some point, so. That will happen at some point.
That's why there's wildlife there.
That's true.
You can hang out, eat.
Yeah, exactly.
There's gonna be a lot of earth moving as part of this project.
Um...
Isn't there for the leveling of the playing field?
For the two on the east, the, the thought, and maybe on the, hopefully not as much on the west, Doug. But I'm not an engineer, Jeff's an engineer.
Well, I think, I think it balances a lot easier on, on the, the western fields. It's when you start getting into, and, and obviously, final design hasn't been done on any of that yet, but it depends on what elevation you put those at, and I think we, we've talked about, we might be able to save some grading by benching, you know, from one field to the next. But, yeah, I mean, that'll all be, that's all part of the, the study, and we'll evaluate it in design.
But, but there's money allocated in the twenty-seventeen budget for initial engineering for the fields.
Correct.
So, you'll, you'll see, you know, you'll see a proposal come back to the board, and the park board, and...
Good.
This is, this is just the beginning.
Any further comments or questions? Okay, so motion second to accept the recommendations from JSD for planning purposes, and also preparing for installing the two most westerly fields along North Alpine Parkway. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item eleven, and it's not requiring action, there is none under twelve unfinished business, there is none new business. Approval of pending operator licenses approved by the police department at headquarters, Heather Taylor, Sean Longeball, and Pamela Powell at J.L. Richards, Lucas Matthews, at QuickTrip three seventy-two. Brittany Hens, Peter Mulligans, Alicia Steiner, and Stop and Go, Matt Robinson.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item fourteen, we have a lengthy list of future agenda items coming our way. Item fifteen, we will not have closed session night, because we didn't have time to talk with the feels prior to that. So, we are, item seventeen, a motion for adjournment, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.